We'll call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education, which was duly noticed. We'll call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education, which was duly noticed on April 9, 2021 through posting a notification to the press in accordance with State Statute 19.84. Please rise for the pledge. Would you?
At this time, I'd like to introduce Matt Perrinboom, who is the principal at Washington Elementary. If you'd say a few words about yourself and the student, that would be great.
Sure. Good evening. It's my pleasure tonight to be able to introduce Jacorian age student at Washington School in Ms. Fieris's class. He's certainly a responsible, respectful, hardworking student, always has a positive attitude, smile on his face, and he's certainly a role model for his peers. So I'm very happy that he was willing to join us tonight to lead us in the pledge.
Thank you.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and we're happy to see you're a Brewer fan. Well, some of us are happy to see you're a Brewer fan, so have a great night. I'd entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Motion by Greg, second by Lisa. All those in favor? Any opposed? That carries nine zero. All board commissioners are present this evening. Next up is the safety message from Mr. Greg Ardry.
Not so much that the temperatures today necessarily lets us remember that it is storm season or heading into it, but a couple of things about lightning. Some of the things that you should do. Go inside when you hear thunder and see lightning. Seems simple, but you should do that. Find a sturdy house building car with a roof. Stay indoors for at least 30 minutes after you last hear thunder. Some of the don'ts. Retreat to dugouts, sheds, pavilions, picnics, shelters, and other small structures. Don't use or touch electronics, outlets, carded phones, or windows. Don't go under or near tall trees, swim or be near water, stand or stand near metal objects. So one of the things when we look at lightning, there's a couple of states in the country it's much more safer to be at when you look at the lightning fatalities over the last decade, and the state of Washington and Nevada would be the safest because they had none. But here in Wisconsin, we had five, unfortunately. So then we think about our travels and things in the immediate future. Every state around us has about five, had about five fatalities over the last decade that were directly attributed to lightning. And if we think about some of our leisure activities, where, where does the incidence of lightning particular, the fatalities come from? Several of us get out and attempt to play golf. That would be the number two aspect of lightning. Soccer would be number one. And just general running and walking outside would be number three, and everything else pales in comparison to those. Unless it's disc golf. So, um, other leisure activities. Water-related, and I don't need to talk about anything else because that was 50% of those fatalities. So as we just look at the season, just pay attention to the incidence and the likelihood of lightning, and don't take it for, for granite, and make sure you remember the do's and don't do any of the don'ts. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ardry, who's recently been re-elected to the Board of Education. So congratulations, Commissioner Ardry. Next, we have citizen comments. Did we have any virtual comments tonight, Denise? No? All right. So we have one person who'd like to speak to us this evening, Laura Madison. Come on in, Laura. Hi, Laura. Please state your name and address for the board and the record.
Hi, everybody. I'm Laura Madison. I live at 2206 Kellogg Ave here in Janesville. You got your timer ready for me, or do we not do that anymore? I'm, no, I'm quick and to the point. You guys know that about me already. I'm here tonight to speak about the memo regarding Superintendent Pufall's 2021-22 contract. I noticed in that that the superintendent's proposed contract is slightly higher for a raise this year than the previous year due to heavy lifting and Herculean efforts, as mentioned in the memo. This year has been a challenge for all of us. I'm sure you guys recognize that you've had to do a lot more this year as well, right? And a challenge not just for teachers, who have modified in-person learning for the safety of students, have had to pivot, have taught virtually, and have also had to teach in-person and virtually at the same time, as I got to yesterday. But also the administration, who had to create and implement new protocols. Custodians, who have increased sanitizing. Our school nurses, some of whom are at multiple buildings. One of the nurses I work with is at six buildings. Our attendance secretaries, with their increased workload and communication. Worked to create the best education for our students. When is the SDG going to compensate not just Superintendent Pufall, but also the rest of the staff for their heavy lifting and their Herculean efforts, as mentioned in the memo? Thank you for taking the time to listen and to consider this when you make future decisions.
Thank you, Laura. Next up, we have Emma DiStefano. So welcome and share your thoughts from Craig.
Hello, everyone. My name is Emma DiStefano, and I'm senior class- ... meeting weekly with Dr. Beyond to coordinate these different events and try to make everything this year as normal as possible. Fall sports have been taking place since before spring break. There are limited spectators, however, games are being held, which the athletes are just very grateful for. Spring sports will be starting soon. April 1st, we had our senior day. We had a station system where seniors were able to pick up their caps and gowns, decorate a ribbon that will be tied on the fence at graduation, and stick their handprints on the mural. May 1st is the date of prom. I'm on the prom decorating committee, and the theme is Secret Garden. Prom will be held at Rotary Garden, starting at 3:00 PM. There will be both a junior and a senior prom court. The court- -will be announced at prom. The junior court ceremony will be at 5:00 PM, and the senior court ceremony will be at 6:00 PM. Link crew will be meeting with Marshall eighth graders on May 7th about their transition to high school and answer any questions they may have. Graduation walks at the elementary schools will be held outdoors on May 25th at 1:00 PM. Graduate- Senior awards are being held in person at the Craig Large Auditorium on May 26th. This award- -admitted scholarships. Social distancing will be arranged in order to take all safety precautions. The graduation ceremony rehearsal and senior picnic will both be held on June 3rd at Monterey Stadium. The picnic is at 11:00 AM, and the rehearsal begins around 1:00 PM. There will be music, food provided, and seniors will receive their class shirts. Graduation will be held in person on June 3rd at Monterey Stadium, beginning at 7:00 PM. Each graduate gets four tickets for people attending. All seating will be six feet apart, so graduates will be spaced out along the football field, and spectators will be asked to sit on both sides of the field. Acapella choir will be singing, and the band will be playing at the ceremony. Our class president, Claire Kettle, will open the cer- -in will be our guest speaker, and we will also have a student speaker. Thank you for your time, and thank you to the school board members for helping-
Live in front of us, so appreciate that. Next, we have eight items listed on the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Have a motion by Commissioner Ardry, second by Commissioner Millard. Next will be Jen Punzel recognizing- How are you? It's great. Yep, that'd be great. Spread the-
Can my girls flank me?
They can flank you. That'd be awesome. Thank you.
That's right. It worked out perfectly.
The floor is yours.
All right. Well, thank you, School Board, for recognizing the Craig Girls- Craig Girls Swim Team this year for our state qualifiers. But more importantly, thank you for the opportunity to let these kids get in the water this year. I know that you all kind of have a lot of lives in your hands. I, I watch the meetings and have some tough decisions to make, trying to keep them safe and give them, you know, opportunities to thrive at the same time, so. And you don't always get to see how your decisions turn out, but I'm happy to report that this was a very happy ending to the story for the girls this year. So Craig had 35 girls come out this year. We had seven home meets. We ended up having to host all of our meets because other schools were not allowed. 18 out of 18 best times at our meet, and everyone stayed healthy. We did not have any close contact. We did not have any issues. The girls were just- So you guys have gone down a dangerous road, asking a swim coach to give you statistics on their, on their swimmers, because we're kind of mathy, but I will recognize each of them individually. So I have sophomore Dakota Reese, right here. You want to step forward, honey? Dakota qualified in the 100 free individually, and she started off our 4x100 relay. She finished 15th in the 100 freestyle, and she beat her seed, swam a best time of 5430. And then she beat her best time when she swam in the relay, leading off that relay with a time of 5378, and set a new school record in the 100 freestyle. So that is Dakota? Yeah, how about that? She beat Erin. Did you beat Erin down here? Who had the record? I think it was Erin. I think she beat Ally's sister. So Ally, Ally has a few words prepared, right? No. She always has a few, few words. She's just never prepared. Ally qualified this year in the 200 freestyle individually and the 500 freestyle individually, and she anchored our 4x100 relay. In the 200 free, she swam a best time of 15762, and she finished ninth overall. She had been seeded 14th, so that's a pretty big accomplishment coming in. Her 500 freestyle, she swam a season best time of a 51753, and she dropped over six seconds from her qualifying time, which is a huge accomplishment. On the 500 freestyle. And then we have junior Cadence Woods here. I call it Cadence our jackknife, because she kind of steps in wherever we need her to. It's awesome to have swimmers on your team that can literally swim any event, and Cadence is one of mine. Cadence swam the third leg of our 4x100 relay, and I'll talk more about that in just a second. I promise I will be short. And then I have senior Sydney Gunther right here. Sydney is more of a fly backstroker specialist. She swam the second leg of our relay, and Sydney will be attending University of Wisconsin lacrosse next year, and she will be swimming there. So I know I'm trying to keep this short and sweet, but they all stepped up to the plate at state this year. And the 400 relay is the final event of the meet. They were the third fastest seed in the slow heat, so all of the fastest teams were yet to go after them. They all swam best times for their splits. They were seeded 11th, and they ended up finishing fifth in the state in the 400 relay and crushed the, the school record. They, they dropped, they beat this Craig school record. They went in about a second off, and so that was kind of their goal. And they ended up beating the school record by almost five seconds, so that was a pretty big accomplishment. So obviously, aside from just them accomplishing the goals and the things that they did by being at the state meet, go and be with peers. They didn't have spectators all season long, and they had spectators at the state meet. So it was just pure joy to see them in that environment on that night and riding the bus and getting to go out to eat on the way home and just kind of having a little bit of normalcy. So thank you all for allowing that to happen, and thank you for recognizing them tonight. And hopefully, we will be able to have spectators next year, and you all can come in to a Craig meet and see the girls swim. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Gardner, are you ready? I think you're next. Next, we have, are you doing this or is Kim? Okay, all right. There you go. Just, just, just like we rehearsed. All right. Next, we have item 3.2, the recognition of Julie Constance and Katie Clarkquist.
Thank you, Commissioner Huth. I'd like to introduce Kim Perrinboom, our Director of Pupil Services, to do the honors.
Clarkquist and Ms. Julie Constance, both school counselors at Franklin Middle School. Julie began her career with the district in 1990, serving at various schools in the district as a school counselor. And Katie started her career in the district in 2005 as an emotional behavioral teacher at Franklin Middle School. For the past six years, these two ladies have had the opportunity, opportunity to work together as school counselors at Franklin Middle School. This past February, Julie and Katie received the Wisconsin School Counseling Team of the Year Award, presented by the Wisconsin School Counsel Association. The Team of the Year Award is meant to recognize a school counseling team that goes above and beyond by working together to meet the personal, career, and academic goals and needs of their students. Julie and Katie most certainly meet this criteria. Here are some examples of their collaborative nature. Together, they implemented a student ambassador program and peer mediation program. In the first two years of implementation, Franklin Middle School saw a decrease of 18% in office disciplinary referrals and a 27% decrease in bullying complaints. These two have a student and family come-first philosophy and to a crisis situation. Collaboration, not only with one another, but with others across the district. So thank you, Julie and Katie, for all of the work that you do, and thank you for choosing to be employees of the School District of Janesville. You're dedicated to our students and families, and you're both assets to our district. We appreciate that you share your talents and professional, professional skills with us, and you are appreciated. So this evening, you have a special recognition pin that you will both walk away with, that fits you both to a T. It says, "You give children that needed one-on-one attention, then watch as they grasp, grasp the concepts that turn learning into joy and life into wonderful possibilities." Congratulations to you both.
Thanks.
Pretty amazing. Well, that was great. As requested by, I believe, Commissioners Thompson and Dahmerhausen, we have an update on the mental health grant with Sonia Robison. Great. Come on in. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Okay. So I just click in. I'm here to give an update on the school-based mental health grant that we received in 2019. And before I do that, I would like to give a shout out to the district mental health team members. They've been phenomenal. There's no way we would have ever been able to pull this off without them. And they are Alexandria Bailey, Leslie Bauer, Becky Bowlin, Michelle Costello, Ebony Duncan, Lillian Henderson, Carrie Kalinsky, and Shelley Osman. When I first presented on the- was, and then on the right side, you'll see what it was we accomplished. So we started off the grant with a- began to expand during the 2019-20 school year, and currently, we have satellite offices at seven buildings. We have one at Craig, and Craig is being served by Mercy. We have one at Parker, Franklin, Jackson, Lincoln, Madison, Toggles, and Wilson. And those schools are being served by whole child, family, and counseling. We also planned family engagement nights. Those didn't take off like we anticipated because of the pandemic, so a lot of things put things on hold, and we weren't able to do so. We did, however, we were able to get some information and have some things at the back-to-school night for Wilson and also at one of Parker's, um, parent-teacher conferences. So we were able to pull those two off. We were able to develop professional development for all district staff, meaning paraprofessional- topic of mental health, and we had over 600 staff members participate, and that's just for the 2019-20 school year until January of 2020. So we had over 600 staffs, staff participate. We came up with the topics from a needs assessment for staff, and then whole child and family counseling developed those PDs for us. We also had- in 2017, said that that was our biggest concern in the mental health area was anxiety. So we were able to hold, and again, we were stopped because of the pandemic. We were able to hold a female group at Craig High School. We started the boys' group, but then we were shut down, so we never did get that one off the ground. Same with Parker. They were able to hold a female group. Their second one was shut down. And then, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say Franklin. I should say Marshall. Marshall Middle School, we started one, but because of the pandemic, we had to shut it down as well. Services and referrals. So DPI requires us to collect data, and the data they require for us to collect, we had to keep track of every student any of our student services staff members saw due to a mental health concern. So this is, we could only count each student once. So if, let's say, a Denise Cruzer at Parker saw someone, and then- same kid, we only counted the kid once. So this ended in March, so we kept track from 2019, the beginning of the school year, to March, our student services staff, which consists of counselors, nurses, psychologists, saw 2061 students for mental health concerns. Then out of those students, or maybe even- per to outside agencies, these are students that were actually referred and followed through with at least their initial intake appointment. So there were other students referred, but they did not follow through. So we're coming to the end of our two-year grant. What are our plans moving forward? We would like to continue to expand the satellite offices. We find that parents find it very convenient, and so do students, to be able to be seen during the daytime in the building. It saves time traveling back and forth to the office. So we hope to expand the offices. We will add Mercy to our existing offices. That will enable students with Mercy Insurance to be seen as well, and we hope to at least add two to three more satellite offices this coming fall. We also want to hire a part-time mental health navigator. This being our first year having the grant, we've learned that there is way more work than what we can do and still keep up with our regular jobs. So we would like to take part of the grant this coming year. Yes. Process for the community agencies, which will speed the process up and allow us to have more students be seen, whether it's in our satellite offices or in the therapist office out in the community. They will also track data related to mental health. They will work with buildings to set up a referral process or to smooth the current referral process we have in place, and they will do other duties as a side. We will also begin, continue to provide mental health PD to staff, and for the first time in the history of the School District of Janesville, we will launch an SEL, which is a social-emotional learning at the high school level, and the curriculum we will be using is called School Connect. Any questions? Any questions?
What is social-emotional learning? Can you break that down for me?
Basically, life skills. It helps you to deal with soft skills, I should say, and other life skills it helps you to deal with. So, let's say if you are having anxiety, or you do have an issue with dealing with social, or getting along with your friends or whatever. So, it's just skills that you learn. They're not, it's not like a whole class you would take. It's little bits and pieces that you give them at the beginning of certain classes, and then they can build upon those skills. We actually begin it in 3K, our P4J program. We use second step. That goes all the way up to eighth grade. So, the problem we were having is that at eighth grade, it dropped. And then, we didn't have, you know, any way of picking it up. Now, we can pick it up in ninth grade. We're looking at starting it out in our freshman seminar classes, so that will cover our freshmen. And then, 10th grade, rolling it up to the health classes, and then moving on so that we will hit all of the students, and so they will have exposure to this at high school level.
I have two questions. So, one is, are any of the offices shared? So, for example, for the elementary kids, you know, we've got Lincoln, Jackson, and Madison, and Wilson. What if there's a Kennedy, Harrison, Monroe? Are they, could they share?
When you say "share," do you mean, are we transporting kids?
Are the services shared? Are the employees or the staff at the satellite offices shared amongst neighboring schools?
Yes. And so, we don't decide who is assigned to which building from Mercy or Hope. They make that decision. So, yes, we do have some that service more than one building.
Okay, cool. And then, do you know, I'm assuming, due to COVID, there is more of a need. What, are there plans that are going to specifically address, or have been, maybe implemented already right now, to help students who are struggling with the pandemic?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, we are going to do that for this coming fall as well. We're providing PD for our staff. We're also going to expand our groups so that we can incorporate more groups within the middle and high school level, and so that students that are dealing with those issues, whether it's anxiety, whether it's grief, loss, social anxiety, or whatever, we want to be able to offer mental health literacy throughout the entire district.
All right. So, 411 people referred to outside agencies. I assume that for, like, private counseling agencies, whatever?
Yes, that's for professional counseling.
All right. Because I know at one time, part of the problem was there was a huge waiting list for families or individuals to see private agencies. They simply had long waiting lists. And then, the private agency out of Illinois offered to come in and provide some in-house with no insurance or whatever. So, I'm sort of curious, do we have any numbers on how many kids were actually seen within the schools for private counseling?
When you say, you mean within the schools at the actual satellite offices? Or you're being just in general?
Well, we're referring out to private agencies, which is great, but I was just wondering how many kids actually saw the private group in the schools for counseling?
Each building kept that. I don't have that number, but each building did keep track of that. I didn't need that for the DPI report, so I just presented what we did at DPI. But I can get that for you.
Well, I think the effort here is fantastic, and I think frankly, we're going to end up with the full-time mental health coordinator eventually. And they're predicting a huge mental health problem for all the schools this fall. So, when the kids come back full-time.
Yes.
You get your work cut out for you.
Yes, we do. We do. We have an excellent team, though.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming in.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda, we have three items that are all health-related: employee dental plan, healthcare plan, and employee life insurance. Ms. Tina Johnson.
Good evening. Thank you. We will address each of them individually as they all do require a vote. We'll talk first about the approval of the dental plan. It is the last year of a three-year rate cap guarantee, which is 7%. As typically happens in a end year, it did come back at 7%. It is the recommendation of the administration to move forward in status quo form with an even 88-12% split for the employer/employee premium contribution for the dental plan.
Motion for approval.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Murray, seconded by Commissioner Millard. Any other questions? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries nine-zero.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the employee healthcare plan.
Second. All right. So, we have a motion to approve the employee healthcare plan effective July 1.
We have a motion to approve the employee healthcare plan effective July 1, 2021, as presented by Murray, seconded by Millard. Any questions? Comments? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries nine-zero. And life insurance.
I'd like to make a motion to improve the employee life insurance plan.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to approve the employee life insurance plan, as presented by Murray, seconded by Millard. Any questions? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries nine-zero. Thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have the presentation on the enrollment-driven staffing plan for 2021-2022. Mr. Garner. As you may remember, the board approved staffing assumptions months ago. It helps the staff build the staffing plan. So, all yours, Scott.
Thank you. Good evening. Staffing plan for a COVID year. This is something that I plan to keep and put on the resume for future, hopefully. This, we've learned so much this year, and this has been quite the journey. At the end, I'm going to thank all of our employees that helped out with this, but it was truly a team effort. So, as we create our staffing plan, trying to predict what our enrollment will look like for next school year, we really, we found that we had to go back to our normal process. And as we're trying to get back to normal as a society, we are trying to get back to normal as a district and look at our processes and procedures the same. So, what you see today, tonight, will be comparisons from staffing plan to staffing plan. This is, the last staffing plan was pre-COVID. Okay? So, you're going to see a difference. This is now where we're going into the 21-22 school year. You know, you know the ace. This is our basic assumptions, the board policy for teacher-pupil ratio. This is what we used to create our staffing plan, which is what we use every year. This is coming out of local budget. I'm going to explain why this, this plan is a little bit more unique than most due to ESSR funds, and I'll get into some detail on that here. As you can see, our average cost of FTE is $78,256. That's not salary, it's salary plus benefits. So, just so you know, that's what we use when we cost out the plan. In terms of our paraprofessionals, the hourly wage is there at $18.22. One of the things that you've heard over and over again is that our district has declining enrollment. That's known, obviously, it's very evident here. From last year, we are dropped, we've dropped 240 students based on our projections. So, this is what we expect to attend next year. We're down to 3,580 elementary skit kids. That results in a 9.0 FTE decrease in our teaching positions. We are lucky that we have not had to non-renew any teachers. We've had, been able to cover those FTE through attrition, retirements, resignations, what have you. So, we do not have any regular education non-renewals this year. Middle school is a little bit of the same. Again, they're down 134 students. That, again, that decreases 5.25. Once again, we're not, we don't have to non-renew staff members. We'll tell you that that was a district leadership decision as we met with the high school principals. One of the things that you very well know is that we have pathways certain certifications to obtain certain backgrounds so that post-high school, they either go on to college, technical school, college, to pursue careers. And as a district leadership team, we thought we wanted to preserve that opportunity, those opportunities for the kids, even though the enrollment in those classes is a little bit lower this year due to what we believe is a COVID year. And so, that, that issue is, do we, do we base it just on the numbers, or do you look forward-thinking, and do we pass, just make these exceptions this year because it's a COVID year? We don't want to break a pathway. You know, it's like a pothole in the road. You don't, you want to fix the potholes, make your road go smooth. We don't want to create potholes for our kids. We want to make sure that that connection continues throughout their high school career. We're hoping that this pandemic is a one-time, once-in-a-lifetime experience, and we don't have another one three years from now. And so, we thought that this year, we would absorb that cost, and that's why you're seeing an increase in FTE of 4.05. One of the other components that I'll get to here, you'll see, ESSR funds. We are also targeting certain ESSR funds that we will be receiving, and I've been working with Dan McCray on this. But we are targeting certain ESSR funds to fund teaching positions that will help achievement gap reduction. So, it's going to help catch our high school students up and get them closer to their peers and back on the pathways that they need to due to the impact of COVID. So, you're going to, you're going to see some of those pieces, specifically, high school RTI. We also have some ESSR funds, and I'll get to that here in just a second, reserved for AVA. While we, we project enrollment, our enrollment, our assumption is that we may have more students decide to go to AVA than we currently have enrolled. So, we're also targeting some of those ESSR funds, not local budget, but ESSR funds to help absorb some of those pieces. So, our projections summary, if you take all three of those areas into account, not, this does not include P4J or charter schools, but our enrollment is down 503 kids from staffing plan to staffing plan. So, this is just the quick summary. You saw that in the executive summary. As you see, we're 10, down 10.8 FTE for the regular teaching staff. We're down 1.0 in EL. P4J is no change. Title I is no change. But again, that's from a different bucket of money. It's not our local budget. Special education, teacher-staff changes, they're not known exactly. The exact changes at this point may not be known right now, given certain circumstances. And then, the paraprofessional staffing, right now, we have down 15.75 hours per day. So, we have variable factors, and this is where I want to kind of, I'll put this down and just talk a little bit. As I talk, we have, we're absorbing the FTEs that we typically may need to non-renew. So, that's good through attrition. Some variable factors that would, what I usually would ask you for is contingency money. Usually, we put three FTE contingency money, which is roughly $240,000. This year, we've taken that out, and we're asking the board for our use of ESSR funds that we expect to receive as contingency money to provide targeted and directed staff for those areas that we need, that we certainly can't predict right now. We do know the high school. We do know AVA. We're trying to be proactive that way. But there are things like, we know, for example, hotspots and space issues that we might run into. We have several. In fact, we have 16 elementary hotspots currently. And what we mean by hotspots is, I showed you the TPR, any, any classroom that's within two of a hotspot. So, Monroe kindergarten, for example, we have current, currently, we have staffed at two sections. They're, the enrollment that we polled, and this is a snapshot, so we pulled the enrollment as a snapshot when we do the staffing plan. That's going to change on a regular basis, but we take basically like a Polaroid, right? And we use that as our data, data piece. So, they're staffed at two sections. One of the things that you'll notice is that while that's within our TPR limit, the board policy of TPR of 25, chances are, their enrollment's going to change. And so, what we want to do right now, we can't, we're not going to commit those funds right now in local money, but a contingency fund, which is now going to be the ESSR, once we see that enrollment go up, and most likely will, we watch it daily, pretty much, once the staffing plan's approved through the summer, I can add another section to that, that kindergarten, or I can add it to a Washington section, or any other school. It's the same process that we follow every year, but we don't want to commit the local budget money right now to do that because it's not within our board policy. We don't have the evidence at this point to, to fund that locally. So, we wait. We're, it's contingent upon enrollment, so if we see enrollment increase, we use the contingency funds to pay for that extra section of teacher, and we plan for that within the, the building schedules. Are there questions on that? That was, that was a lot. Yes.
I am happy to. No. Okay. So, I heard you say that you were trying to be proactive with some of those ESSR funds, you know, at the, at the high school level. So, if I'm hearing you correctly, maybe you can confirm that too, that you're also looking to potentially use some of those ESSR funds for those kindergarten hotspots to be able to be proactive because some of those gaps with the pandemic and maybe the learning not occurring is great with the P4J program and those kindergarteners coming into that particular grade level with some disadvantages to have a lower
Correct.
As a, as a prior elementary teacher, I will advocate for a lower one, even if it was at 25 at a kindergarten. That's a lot of kindergarteners, A, but also during a pandemic year prior to that, where those gaps, especially with our promises being at third-grade reading level and early literacy initiatives within the district. I would ask that you concentrate on that area as well going forward. So, thank you for having that in your, back of your mind.
You bet. Yeah. That is part of our plan. And again, we don't know what we don't know at this point. And so, rather than create a policy that forces us into a peg, we want to have a little bit of flexibility to be able to target that information, and we'll inform the board as we do that.
So, thank you very much, and I appreciate your focus on places like Monroe, you know, where this could possibly happen, and, and the way that you're planning on using the ESSR funds. And, but I do have a question that just occurred to me. One of the things that, that, you know, is, needs to be taken into consideration with things like an ESSR fund is that that is, that money won't be there all the time.
Correct.
So, and so, I just, I'm worried about using that money for something that we might need down the road, and then, then what do we do when that money runs out? What are your thoughts?
So, thank, yeah. So, what we're doing right now as a, as a leadership team is we're kind of planning ahead. We've decided that we want to focus on teaching and learning because that's what we're about. So, teaching and learning for students, that's where we're going to focus our priority in terms of money, whether that's dealing with a hotspot, space issue, those types of things. Are we looking at different specialists? But yes, you're correct in saying that this money isn't going to be here forever. What that means is, it's going to be probably two- to three-year process. And then, once that happens, we have to see where the enrollment is, and there, there may be, there may be some non-renewals, or there may be some FTE that we lose based on enrollment. We don't know if it's going to go up or down, or, or what, but we certainly know that we need to, we have to be proactive for the kids that we have right now and their experiences. Mm-hmm? Okay.
Yeah. Help me, remind me again, ESSR funds come from the state and the governors, I believe.
This is a federal, federal
This is the federal one, okay. And it's, how long will this last?
I believe, and Mr. McCray's here, he can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's, there's three versions of it. So, about approximately three years.
Okay. And we can use them in any of those years that we need to, but there's a limit to how much we can spend.
The limit is what they give us. There are, so whatever they give us is our limit to spend, but there are certain rules within the, within that, that, for example, we have to, we have to commit a certain percentage to achieve
So, it's, is it a use-it-or-lose-it proposition?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you. On, it says page 50, but it's like.
Our plan assumptions.
Yeah.
The TPR is yes.
But see, on number 10, though, our policy says.
Yes, that is an error. So I. Accidentally got put into the print mode, but I'm asking, we did not include that in the financial summary.
Okay. Okay. I don't know how much, well, we do know it's for every FTE or additional section, it's like $80,000.
Yes, approximately.
Right? And I don't know how much is in the ESER funds that would be, and I'm really, frame this with looking at the elementary school numbers here. You know, if we define a hotspot as being within two of 25, there seems to be.
We have about.
Several.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of them, right?
Yeah.
So again, I don't know how much is it going to be available for FTEs if we need a new ESER fund. The administration may have to come back to us and ask for some more money.
Well, so that's why we're asking right now, preempting, preempting that, so, so that we don't have to come back. We're asking for your blessing, I would ask, to use the ESER funds as contingency monies to help alleviate, whether that's a hotspot or TPR concern, or targeted intervention to help our students learn and grow. So yeah, the funds, I've, I've talked to Mr. McCray, we do, we will have plenty to.
Okay.
Be able to cover those, those expenses.
Okay. Just for example, Kennedy School, the second grade.
Yes.
This past year or this current year, there's three sections.
Yes.
And the TPR is 16.3. But the staffing plan goes down to two sections, which means that second-grade teacher this year that has 16.3 kids is going to have 25 next year in their class.
Based on the snapshot that we have right.
Right. And that's additional nine more students that that teacher is going to take on.
Correct. However, again, I'll say that again, I mean, this is, this is, we did the local budget based on board policy.
Right, right.
We are going to be watching that very carefully.
So. What does this mean is relates to this, this particular teacher.
For our paraprofessional minutes, every, every school gets 2.25 at the elementary, 2.25 minutes per student. And so you multiply, say you have 400 kids, so it's 400 times 2.25 minutes, and that's the number of minutes per day that they get. And that translates then into paraprofessional hours. We do, on a regular basis, depending on the situation, add additional staff to assist.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. I talked about the targeted use of ESER funds.
Scott, quick question. As you were talking about the 2.25 minutes per student for paras. And I guess my question is, is that is based on what?
That formula is something that's common within districts. We, we pulled it, we've used that type of formula forever. It's the type of formula, you know, that we just use that so, as a, as a guidepost for us. It helps us project how many hours we'll need. We found that this is work, it works. Sometimes we do need to add time, depending on, because what doesn't account, obviously, it's a number. It doesn't account the type, where the students are at, what kind of students, you know, in terms of learning, what other issues are we dealing with that we may need to add. And that's why we, we do add sometimes.
Sure. And that was getting to the heart of my, I guess, the question that I have is, is as we've gone forward in particular, coming off of the, the COVID year, ESER, the more focus on students, I mean, well, we know the first stopgap is potentially a para.
Correct.
Or paras, depending on, I'd say their skill level and assignment. So it was just, you know, what was fundamentally, how do we come up with that? And is that maybe the first spot we look at ahead of adding a teacher, because that might be financially, I mean, it might be more readily available. I'm not sure. I guess that was.
So yeah, absolutely. We, we always look at what I would say the more physically responsible but effective option would be. That could be adding a, a paraprofessional. It could be adding a teacher. It could be adding a different teacher license or profession or skill. The thing that we have, we do run into is our, is people, the human resource part of it. Where do we, where can we find the people? And. To find teachers more easily than we are paraprofessionals. And so that's typically where we go.
Sure. Okay.
That is what we're quote-unquote saving based on the staffing plan and the local budget due to the 503 student decrease in enrollment. And so that's what all that information translates into. Once again, that's local budget money. Okay.
I'm sorry. That's not necessarily savings because we are dropping in revenue so much that.
Yes. And savings might be a mischaracterization. What I'm saying is, the cost to the district is 897,000, $861 less than it was.
Okay.
Last year for the staffing plan, reduce expenditures. Thank you. Yep. And so some important timelines, and you know me, I talk about timelines. Obviously, this is an important timeline tonight. Once this plan is hopefully approved tonight, we can move forward with creating contracts, getting those out to teachers. April 27th is the last possible meeting for preliminary non-renewals, if in fact that should happen. We don't anticipate that to happen, but I want, it's my responsibility to share that with you. That would be occurring on April 27th. And then our May 11th board meeting is the last possible meeting for final non-renewals, if in fact there are any. So just important timelines. We need to follow their statutory guidelines. Question. Any other questions? Appreciate your time tonight.
So several.
Through this.
So several months ago, we approved the staffing assumptions, which generates the guardrails for you as to how much you can staff.
Correct.
And so it's based on board policy. So what you're telling us, I think, this evening is the ESER funds could help address some of those concerns regarding mental health, which we had a report earlier tonight. If we are able to find aides, if we're able to find mental health professionals or counselors or additional teachers, that is how we're going to try to approach keeping us inside the guardrails. And it may be adding staff if TPR does get exceeded.
That's exactly what we're asking. In fact, that's why I polled the contingency three FTE because I believe we're going to need more.
Right.
And that's why I'm asking for your blessing tonight to use the ESER funds as our contingency fund. That way, I don't have to continue to keep coming to you asking. If you give me your blessing tonight, then what, what we do then is we'll inform you of what we're doing. You'll, you see the postings, and we can keep you updated on how we're addressing the staffing needs.
And they may be very different people in the fact that projections, our mental health is going to be an issue.
Right.
Other things we may have may be an issue, and we're able to use ESER funds to fund those short-term, hopefully, short-term, two-year issues.
That is the hope.
So those would be typically LTE, a limited-term employee, or a two-year contract employee.
Yep.
Or it could be contracted services as we've had with the other company.
Correct. And we do use limited term quite a bit. Again, depending on how, what kind of pool we have, we, we would look at those different options.
Okay. Michelle, did you have something?
I do. And I just want to say that when you said it started electronically last week, what I was looking for, and you mentioned today is the pathways are staying intact for the high schools. I think that is really good because we are in the business of servicing the kids. But I also looked for making sure the middle school and, and I think that because of all the new courses added in, in middle school, those, we were able to keep a lot of those and.
We did, yes.
Yeah. So that was really good. I think that was a really good decision and, and something that was. Thank you for looking ahead and keeping those, keeping those in.
I entertain a motion to approve the. Yes, Kathy?
Sure. I just, I just was wondering, what's going on with the challenge program at, like, fourth grade at Madison? And where else did I see it? Third grade here in Washington, are the kids just not enrolling? Or what, what's happening?
So what we're finding with the challenge program is that we're, the criteria that we have for that, that program is, is stayed steady. What we're seeing is that we're, we're not seeing as many kids either opt, opt for the challenge program or qualify for the challenge program, and therefore the enrollment, you, you're seeing a drop in that kind of enrollment. Stacy Peterson is the one who's in charge of, of that, and she's, she's on top of it. Allison DeGraff, myself, and Stacy have been meeting on a regular basis, as well as Mr. Perrinboon, to address those things.
No. The enrollment figures really don't factor in our transfer in students, does it?
Nope. That's our, enrollment is, is a variable factor.
And so I'm assuming that most of those students would go into existing classrooms where we can accommodate them, correct?
Yes.
And I guess the comment I want to make on that alleged $900,000 that we're trimming from labor is, that still doesn't mean the board's not going to have a problem financially, because just the salary and fringe increases next year will wipe that out, that figure. And there are other parts of the budget we haven't seen. So we're not flush with money by any stretch of the imagination.
Yeah, you hear that from.
The budget is tight.
Yes, it is. Yeah.
I will move for approval.
All right. We have a motion to approve the enrollment-driven staffing plan for the 2021-22 school year without contingencies in lieu of using ESER funds. Second by Kathy? Motion by Dale, second by Kathy. Any other questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries 9-0.
Thank you so much.
Get that, Denise? Thank you. Next on the agenda is the finance committee report. I'll get one.
Okay. Well, a month ago, we had a committee meeting, seemed even longer, to be honest. But, so a couple of key things that we covered. One is, we really wanted to discuss the bond proceeds, the referendum and how they were being used. And a couple of things are, just the agency that we're using, PMA. Fantastic job of analyzing the cash flow schedule, what we're looking at spending when, and really working with Mr. McCray and looking at what is the best investment vessel that is statutorily available and working through that. So the money's already working before we've spent it. So that's the, that's probably the key thing and the most wonderful thing about it. But I would also say, given where the interest rates are at, at this point, it's not like it's making a whole lot of money at this point. So, but we're doing good there. So as we look at, you know, sort of where we're at in the pathway process. This is a key month, being that the first phase is going out for bid, starting. I guess now I will assist in actively working toward a groundbreaking ceremony to have with board members, current and future and others, just to, you know, as a saying, here's what we're looking at doing. So we're actively planning that. But really. Estimate from Cullen on what the bid should come back at. So far, we would be ahead of. Barler projects, we may be able to do a couple of extra added pieces associated with that. So we'll see how that goes. Couple other things to note, and one of the most important things as we look at the cooling season for our schools that have cooling, they're up and ready and the systems are up and ready to run, particularly at the high schools. So that was good news. Hopefully, we'll have a few students there. Then, one of the more rewarding parts of our meeting was really a discussion on the custodial projects, training, where we've been and where we're at. And major kudos to Dave Farwell. And quite frankly, the training he's put in place, they, we've had over 250 hours of training this, over this past year, which was outstanding. But more importantly, his leadership and his ability to coach, his ability to coach employees has really improved the whole custodial effort and given some others opportunities to do other things that they would prefer to do rather than be custodians within, for us. So just kudos to him and his leadership, and it really came out in his presentation and the data associated. So just wanted to share that. Those are the highlights. Other than, I think it is one more that is really important, the sponsorships and naming rights for facilities. We, I would say, we had a working document that we mostly approved, and we thought, well, since we will have an athletic director present, let's dust that off and make sure that what we're asking to be done, we've documented it in that. So we'll be reviewing that here over the next couple of months to make sure those things match up. Any questions?
Are you accepting volunteers to help with, not me, but other volunteers from the community to help with the athletic naming, et cetera? I think Commissioner Murray's had some people step up who'd like to be involved in that.
No, we're not asking for that at this point.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Well, it appears that the Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee is meeting on April 20th at 4:30, and Commissioner Audrey is going to chair that because he'll still be the finance chair at that time. So that's great. Last committee meeting of the year, and then you start a new group. And we, our next Board of Education meeting is April 27th at 6 o'clock, right here. Scott?
Thank you, Commissioner Huth. I got caught up in answering question, questions. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the team that helped put this staffing plan together, all the directors, all the principals, the meetings, the Zoom meetings, the in-person meetings that we've had. And, and I have to say, most of all, Michelle Call, who, who keeps it all together and ties it together for, for us so that we can, this is a lot to keep track of, and she's got it all memorized, I believe, in her head. So I just wanted to say thank you to her. Thanks.
We are adjourned.